Good afternoon. Let me introduce the people who are here and speaking and give you the correct pronunciations of their name. Tom Donnelly, former Oxford School Board President. Cory Bailey, former Oxford School Board Treasurer. Bill Cikely, their attorney. If you have not signed in over there, please do so with your name, organization, and email. I'm Jim Kurtzner, and I want you all to know how we got here today. Mr. Donnelly, Mr. Bailey came to me to help tell their story to the Oxford community. As you may know, I retired as one of you in September. As reporters, as investigative reporters, we all want to tell meaningful stories that can impact change. In all my 49 years in TV news, this is the most important story I will cover. And I'm doing it with all of you. Let me explain what that means. This is not a sit-down with one television station. It's not a sit-down with one newspaper. It's not a sit-down or a live radio interview. It's with all of you because this story is that important. It will be up to stakeholders after today to take the next steps, including for accountability. But people in this community have known in their gut that there's more to this. They will be getting more answers now from these two stakeholders. In my view, they do this today with integrity and courage. They resigned because they couldn't do the job they were elected to do. So here are Tom Donnelly and Cory Bailey. Tom?
Thank you, Jim, and thank you for being here. And as I'm looking at cameras and reporters, my message is to the community, the first thing I have to do is take care of some business. In a press release that came out, the Legacy Center was tied to this press conference. And I want to make clear to Christian Mills, I'm sorry, who, Christian owns the Legacy Center, the Legacy Center is not sponsoring this event, Legacy Center is not sponsoring this press release, and I'm here to tell you that after this press release, this is going to be a no-media building, including the 30th, where we as a coffee shop and the rest of the Legacy Center are going to welcome teenagers back into this building like we did one year ago. So again, Christian, I'm sorry that that got twisted, but I want to make sure that everyone realizes that the Legacy Center was not a sponsor of this and did not put this together. Kimberly and I own this coffee shop. We used it as a place to have this. Why speak now? Well, yesterday, we had the honor to speak to the families. That was one of the toughest days in my life. Today, we speak to our community. We promised transparency, and we've never been able to get there. Since my resignation from the school board, I've been able to be transparent with community members when asked. With depositions scheduled in a few weeks, I want the parents and the people of this community to hear from me first. Oxford Strong needs to mean more than we can endure pain. It needs to mean that we can bear and deal with whatever transparency brings. And that transparency begins today. How it should have been and how it should always be. A third-party independent review should not be optional and should always be done immediately. There should be trained teams that are the first to enter the disaster. Examples would be a tornado, a plane crash, a police shooting. You don't tell a community to figure that out, but trained individuals come to the scenes. FEMA will come to the scene on a tornado. An aeronautical company will come to a plane crash. And in a police shooting, there will be an organization that goes in to clear that as a clean or a not-clean shooting. That should be done and always be done in the same way in these cases. Why? Because to this day, we have not independently reviewed the events from the start of the school year to the 30th of November 2021. The prosecutor's office only went so far. SEC, the Security Education Consultant, only went so far in their investigation. They made sure that we had policies, and they made sure we had guidelines, but never went into whether we executed them. A year later, we are frozen in time when it comes to the fact, the facts of that time So where did our first repeated mantra come from? The counselors who met with the shooter could have gone down two forks. Both were legitimate. He chose suicidal ideation. Regrettably, this brought devastation to our district. How did we get to that conclusion if a third-party independent review never took place? I still do not know the answer to that question today. And in that counseling office on the 29th and 30th, were any of the Secret Service Homeland Security Threat Assessment protocols implemented and used? You see, if a third-party independent review would have occurred, it would have uncovered these failures already. But all we experienced was constant stalling of the independent review process. My next point. Who works for who? I learned months into the, I learned months in that the non-district voices were being paid by our insurance company and not the district. Why does that matter? Because over time, there were too many incidents where things were done against the board's interests. For instance, I learned in the month of May something we should have been told by our non-district voices in February. Let me say that again. I learned in the month of May something we should have been told by our non-district voices in February concerning the Oakland County Prosecutor's position on us going ahead with a third-party review. Throughout those months, when I repeatedly shared concerns that our narrative wasn't making any sense to our community, I was told to keep the mantra going. I would repeatedly ask the question, "What do you all know that I don't know?" and would get the response that I had all the information, but I didn't. All I needed was Vin Johnson to do a press conference and reveal the fact that he could report things that I did not know, things that the district had, things that the district knew, but I did not know. In mid-May, when I finally found out what the prosecutor was thinking about the third-party review, against the recommendation of District Council, we began third-party review processes with Guidepost. And immediately, Guidepost began to face obstacles. Roadblocks were put in their path, slow to get information, struggling to get interviews set up. But the most significant roadblock was in the middle to late July, when the district's legal council met with the legal council of the teachers' union and the administration union and convinced them not to participate in the review process. This independent review process was clearly directed by a vote by the board, but it was undercut by our own council. So as I said earlier, who works for who? Who's the client? In August, Cory Bailey, who was our treasurer and also our policy committee, a member of the policy committee, began to look deeply into our threat assessment policies and guidelines. He came across a Homeland Security Secret Service Threat Assessment protocol, which is referenced in our very policies. And I'll say this twice, this document changed everything from my perspective. This document changed everything from my perspective. When am I seeing this document? August. I've never seen it in the months prior. It is a protocol that describes the proper procedures to assess a threat preemptively, not one that's already happened, but preemptively. It assumes that trained counselors, educators, administrators, and resource officers collect markers that lead them as a team to prevent an incident before it happens. What's a marker? Some examples. Grades begin to change suddenly. And by the way, this is that guideline. You could do this on a website and search and just get it. They're trained to look for markers when it comes to a child. You're looking for changes. You're looking for grades that have suddenly begun to plummet. You've looked for attendance that is suddenly going the wrong way. You look for a student who wasn't withdrawn, but now is withdrawn and depressed. You look for a student who is getting into scuffles that never got into scuffles, showing signs of violence. You look for students who have experienced loss in their lives recently. You look for homework assignments that lean towards dark things or violent things. You look for the testing poorly on an emotional assessment. Let me pause there for a minute. Oxford School System uses an assessment called S A E B R. The shooter's class should have taken that assessment in 2020 and 2021. Did we look at them? Did we add the students with concerning scores in a marker system? Is there a marker system that the counselor could see? Other markers, violent writings, drawings, a teacher who keeps bringing concerns about a student to the counseling office. The markers could be self-harm. They could be other harm-directed. But one of the things that clearly is stated at the beginning of this document is that the threshold for pulling a team together should be low. It's the team's job to decide whether you have a low or a medium or a high risk factor based on the team's work. The district certainly didn't use it as designed in the months leading up to the shooting. There's no evidence that we've ever used it as it is designed, even though since 2011, the policies and guidelines have been in our system. I met every board member individually to share this document, and Cory's in my concern about it. Each member of the board agreed that something should be done. I called a special board meeting to discuss this topic. District Council disagreed with Cory's and my assessment. Other board members seemed to agree with the district council. I couldn't in good conscience stay on the board, and I resigned around a week later. I'll leave some reflective thoughts toward the end and introduce to you Cory Bailey.
First off, I would like to echo what Tom said, that yes, we had the opportunity to meet with family members yesterday. And I would again like to publicly say that I am so very sorry for the loss that they suffered last November and every day since. When it comes to student safety in our schools, there are a couple main policies and guidelines that are best based on decades of research from top agencies in the country like the NFPA or the Secret Service or Homeland Security. One policy is in regards to fire drills and emergency situations. The other is managing threat assessments and potentially violent behaviors. One is an all-hands-on-deck, well-run system with training and accountability to ensure its success. The other has the same potential, but it has been ignored far too long. Policy 8420, Emergency Situations, begins with a bold statement by the Board of Education that says, "The board is committed to providing a safe learning and work environment. Unfortunately, natural and man-made disasters do occur. Such emergencies are best met by preparedness and planning." I want to say that again. They are best met by preparedness and planning. It clearly defines how many fire drills must be performed each year, when they're to be performed, even the time of day that some must occur. It is the playbook on how to prevent fatalities as it relates to fire emergencies. Each building principal is required to submit their training plans to the deputy superintendent and to every member on their team. It is a systematic approach where many team members are expected to know and be able to carry out their role for the drills and for real-life events in order to be successful. Why do I bring this up when we're here to talk about the shooting November 30th? Because the training and attention given to this policy has been perfected to the level that it has allowed for zero fatalities or fire-related fatalities in over five decades in the United States. Quite a contrast to the other playbook regarding threat assessment. In 2004, Policy 8400, School Safety, was adopted, and it was designed to be consistent with the U.S. Secret Service and Department of Homeland Security Manual titled Enhancing School Safety Using a Threat Assessment Model: An Operational Guide for Preventing Targeted School Violence. Tom already showed it to you. It's easily downloaded from the website. I want to say that again. It is an operational guide for preventing targeted school violence. It is a detailed playbook to train teams to identify and prevent school threats. This playbook and model is designed similar to the playbook for preventing fire emergencies and how to manage them when they occur. They are both systematic approaches that require training and accountability for everyone involved. It clearly defines the team members needed. It clearly defines the roles each member plays in the process, beginning at the leadership down to the counselors. It clearly defines the need for frequent training to rehearse various scenarios so the team is prepared for anything. It clearly defines the importance of involving law enforcement early in the process. It clearly defines the importance of training and functioning like a team. And it clearly defines every step of the way from identifying to preventing a threat. Oxford has had this policy and model since 2004, and it has been updated several times over the years, most recently June of 2021, just months prior to the shooting. Since the early days after the shooting, this board had been told over and over that the school had all the policies in place and that our team did everything right, but a bad thing still happened. If that were true, how could the shooting have happened? The board was even provided a report presentation from Secure Educational Consultants where they praised our team and said, "We have done a remarkable job in developing and executing the extremely comprehensive safety and security plans," and that Oxford Schools currently provides a very safe and secure environment for staff and students. Again, if all of this were true, how would the shooting have happened? Tom and I would later learn that this report was not based on a complete investigation. It only focused on if we had the policies. It never touched on if we ever implemented or trained people to carry out these policies and procedures. Tom and I would later learn that the school had not put this playbook to practice at any of our buildings. We had been informed that those responsible for safety have raised concerns over the lack of training for quite some time, but those concerns were ignored. In a board meeting earlier this year, I repeated what I had been told and that we had all the policies in place. Our team did everything right, but a bad thing still happened. I had been deceived, and I then passed along what I had been told, only to learn that this could not have been further from the truth. No team would ever be brought together. No leadership nor accountability would ever take place to ensure this policy was implemented at the high school or any building. No frequent training sessions would ever happen. No playbook would ever be followed. In that SEC report that I just showed you, under Findings, item number nine recommends that the school establish and train their threat assessment teams. Something didn't add up. If we already had this in place and our team did everything right, why would we now need to establish and train our teams? They should already be established, and they should already be trained. Last week at the board meeting, the administration presented new guidelines and new plans for handling threat assessments moving forward. Again, if we already had this in place and our team did everything right, why is the school presenting this new playbook and new training and a new team? While I was sitting at home watching this presentation, I had these guidelines sitting in front of me. These were adopted March of 2011, and they are the same wording, format, documents that the school is now presenting as the new format. The only thing new is that they're now going to implement them. At the request of a couple diligent community members, I started digging into Policy 8400, but more importantly, that operational manual from the Secret Service. This playbook has many, many detailed steps that make it successful, and I uncovered pages of questions and concerns that I brought to Tom, who then took it to each board member individually. Each board member was equally concerned and wanted action to take place. As Tom said, we called for a special board meeting to get those answers. And if those answers were true, then we had several people in the school that should immediately be held accountable. I want to be clear, the board is made up of good people who wanted to do the right thing, but they were convinced by voices outside of our district that they needed to wait and that coming forward would only bankrupt the district and potentially tear this community apart. It became clear that Tom and I were alone on this island. And our options became clear that we could either stay, or we could either go along and stay silent, or we could move along and be a voice for change. If we as board members were ever to show that we were Oxford Strong, it was then. Being strong means being able to stand up and face the storm surrounding you and take action. Leaders lead with integrity and ethics. These are qualities that the community saw and elected us to these roles several years ago. Leaving the board was a difficult decision for me because I love this community, but I felt my ability to serve with honor and integrity were gone if I stayed and stayed silent. We are elected by the community to represent each and every student, parent, teacher, and staff, and they expect us to act with a level of integrity and ethics. Remaining silent was not being honest or transparent. We promised early in the process that we would be both, and to keep that commitment, we left the board so that we could be here today. The school has several people that do still need to be held accountable, but that is now up to the stakeholders and the incoming board members to take action. Tom and I are speaking out because there are many, many other Oxefords out there that are not taking threat assessment seriously. The state requires fire drills several times per year, but they are silent on requiring the same emphasis on school threat assessment. I believe that Oxford has a moral and ethical obligation to not only learn from their failures, but to use this tragedy as a loud voice to other districts that if you fail to implement Policy 8400 like Oxford, then your results will be the same as Oxford. Think of how many other children could be saved if other schools learned from our failures and took action within their own buildings. Oxford said in their last board meeting that they are now taking the steps to take this seriously and will begin to implement the new policies. It is time for every district to do the same. The schools train religiously on fire prevention and fire drills as outlined in the NFPA manuals, and the United States has not had one child fatality since 1958. We have the same detailed model from the Secret Service on how to prevent school violence, but we do nothing with it. And in this country, we seem to see school shootings almost every week in the news. Oxford trained for one policy and had perfect results. Oxford neglected to train for the other policy, and the results were fatal. I pray that every parent in Michigan is watching this today and will go back to their school boards and demand that their schools dust off Policy 8400 manual and train with as much passion as they do fire drills. It is our sincere hope and prayer that the three newly-elected board members will now be able to be an inspiration of change with the current board members and step up and make the needed changes and start being honest and transparent with not just the families of the victims, but the community that elected them to begin with. I truly believe that if Oxford Community Schools had been prepared with Policy 8400 these past few years and had actually trained on threat assessment, the situation would have ended November 29th, and the 30th would have just been another day in Oxford. Thank you for your time today.
Tom, you have some more to say? You're good? Questions?
Yeah, what makes you anxious about this? So let me just make sure I understand you properly. It sounds like you're saying that this was sloppy by not taking the threat assessment, not training on it, and not taking these so-called markers seriously. Am I understanding? I mean, did I sum up what you mean?
I think you did, but maybe some meat in there. There's record that some of our employees went outside of the district to get trained on this threat assessment, right? The kind of like mandatory training. What we lack is evidence that that was ever brought back to our buildings, instituted, teams created, and that they practiced and did what you would for like a fire drill and those kinds of things. That's what's declared to be done inside the manual, and it's as if we did some training and got checkbox on some training, but never brought it back to bring it part of a systematic approach to how we deal with potential threats. And yes, that means the markers as well.
So what makes you anxious about this? Are you saying that this shooting could have been avoided?
I think that's exactly what Cory said, potentially, right? Because the question is, did we do everything that we could do? Well, it's May, and we realize that there's a document that we hadn't been introduced to in 10 months, and the document's in our own policies. And so when you start to read the document for yourself, you're going, "Where are we doing that?" And that's exactly Cory's point. As he was digging through those, it was clear that we sent people away to get trained, and they came back, but never, we don't have any record that we've ever filled out an 8400 form, which is required by the team in any of our schools.
Tom, why not share this information while the two of you are still on the board? And who specifically would tell you not to do that because it would bankrupt the district and tear the community apart?
Being advised by council to not get specific on who because those things might come out in deposition times, and just know that we're going to probably, both of us are going to be deposed in the next two to three weeks several times. But your original question in front of that, what was it? Please repeat it.
Why not speak up sooner while the two of you are still on the board?
I felt I did that in that meeting, that special meeting, and I felt that I did that as a board president. One of the things that I understood as my responsibility is that I not only am an individual on the board, but I speak for the board. So I have to be careful as the president when I'm in public as to identifying when I'm stating my opinion and when I'm speaking for them. And I thought this was too big to do out in a public session and that I would resign and then start being able to say things as Tom Donnelly and not confuse the two roles.
Do you feel the public has been lied to with a message that everything was done to keep the kids safe, and it's still happening?
I believe that as a board, I think I provided evidence that we've been lied to, that information was withheld from us for sometimes months. Understand, when I finally figured it out in May, it wasn't because they told me.
it wasn't because they told me. It's because I had to go ask questions of people myself, and I called the prosecutor's office myself, and I found out that they sent a memo in the end of February that I never got.
Tom, are you saying on the subject of the independent board review or having an independent review that you all wanted to have that done, that the board wanted it done, but it was council who said that you need to go in front of people and say that that's not the way we're going to go? Can you just expound a little bit more on the independent review, making that decision and turning down the attorney general?
One of my best friends is a superintendent that was here when the shooting took place, Tim Throne. And we had a very intimate conversation about how important the third-party review was, and we wanted to be way beyond just the 29th and 30th, but I won't talk about that. The idea that we were going to be transparent and that we were going to begin that review was a commitment that we made, I believe, in the middle of December. I mean, it was like a week or two after the shooting, and it was like one of the four main points that we were committed to, only to find that every time it came up, the can kept getting kicked. It kept getting kicked.
By whom?
Well...
That's important. That's a fair question.
It is. And I think I said in my statement, it is the non-district voices in the room.
Legal counsel. Is that the insurance companies?
Who is that? Who is that?
Yeah, I... I have some concerns about this. These fellows are going to be deposed. These questions will be asked. I think it is, Paula, a fair question. And I think that most of you know that when a tragedy like this occurs, the first group out is usually an insurance company. And they take over the messaging. It happened, we saw it at Michigan State.
Are they the "they"? Because you... I mean, it's very ubiquitous to say "they." Who is "they"? Who said "don't talk"? That's a fair question. They may be deposed for holding a news conference.
Sure.
And so you're telling a bunch of reporters "they"? Who is the ubiquitous "they"?
Great question, Paula, and here's the problem. There are issues of privilege during those kinds of communications, and who can assert the privilege and who can waive the privilege is going to be an issue in this case. And I think Judge Chabot is likely to have to resolve. It's not clear to me that Mr. Donley or Mr. Bailey can waive the attorney-client privilege. So if the attorney said something to them, can they discuss it? Or is that the school board's privilege? And I think that's going to have to be worked out in the courtroom. I understand your frustration with it. It's a fair question. It's just why I'm here, and I'm not going to let them get into who they think the "they's" are. That's my job.
But there's some confusion here as to appreciating hindsight being what it is.
Sure.
If there were members of the board and administration that wanted to open things up, but yet legal counsel advises otherwise, why didn't they just say, "Legal counsel, be damned. This is what we're going to do"?
I'm going to take that question. That's a fair question. But a board, the school board, I've spent 14 years on school boards in this state. A board does not speak by any one person. It speaks by a vote of the majority. And therefore, since no vote was taken, one could argue with hindsight, maybe somebody should have brought that motion, right? They didn't, so no vote was taken. And that's why they didn't decide to simply override what anybody else may or may not have said.
What was the prosecutor's position on all of this? If you could kind of explain that a little bit more. You came to find out in May that there was something that the prosecutor's office had said or not, but you were vague until later. Can you tell?
Sure, and I think that... I want to tie that into your original question. As Cory mentioned, there were concerned parents and community members that started sharing information with us. And I can tell you that there was a meeting. It was a first meeting where a bunch of young people came to talk about the temporary memorial. And I heard a woman scream in the background, "You're lying." And I don't lie. And so now I need to know what she knows that I don't know and how that all fits. Lying about the third-party review. Lying about why we're not getting it done. You can go back to the videos. What I was told and what I stated was that because the prosecutor has all of our servers and the prosecutor has all this information and the prosecutor's trying two parents in something that's never been tried before, we can't start the third-party review. But as I told that to the community in March and April, they progressively got angrier and angry with me.
Who's "they"?
The community. I could sense it. And again, not just Tom, we disagree with you. You're lying. And hence, I'm saying, what do they know that I don't know? Someone said to me in an email, "Have you seen the video? Have you talked to the prosecutor?" I said, "No, I didn't know that I could." So I picked up the phone and called the office. A gentleman at the prosecutor's office. I say to him, "Why are you doing what you're doing? I'm saying what I'm supposed to say, but every time you kick me in the teeth." He goes, "Tom, why are you doing what you're doing? Every time I say what I'm supposed to say, you kick me in the teeth." And then he says to me after a pause, "Did you not get our message at the end of February? We thought you were just being a jerk." I said, "What memo? What message?" We clearly sent a message and we had a conversation. Telling your counsel to tell the board to stop using the prosecutor and the prosecution as a reason not to do it for two months. That's why I said that's the largest example of putting a roadblock for two months. I didn't realize. Someone then finally sent me the March 4th email that went out to all the families. There's families on a... The prosecutor has this email blast that goes out. Not one board member's on it. And she quotes a part of the letter that I should have gotten, telling the community that I sent this to the districts, and that was it. You'll notice that within one week, we have a special meeting. We hired Varnum as an attorney firm. You'll see that we started the third-party review with Guideposts within 14 days. You'll see that we were different after we began to learn that truth.
Question for Cory. If you can step to the podium.
Yep.
Which responsibility was it to implement that threat assessment? As far as you know, why does it not go?
The way a school board works is the school board creates policy. They adopt policy. It is then up to the superintendent to delegate it to their teams all the way down to the principals and the employees to implement.
So this is a Tim Throne miss. I know he's your best friend, but this is a Tim Throne miss, is what we're saying.
The board only has one employee, and that is the superintendent.
So this is a Tim Throne miss for not implementing the threat assessment, yes?
Paul, I think that if you look at...
Step up to the mic.
There are two sets of policies out there. There's the board policy, and then there's the administrative policy. You can just get on the Oxford School District website and download both. And what you'll see in there is an outline of who is responsible for each and every step of it.
I get that. There... Gentlemen, please, step to the mic. I mean, you're giving this news conference. So who's responsible? It's a fair question, another fair question.
It's a very fair statement. And again, our employee is given the policy to create and use this model. Then his team takes care of the guidelines and implements it. So yes, it was up to the superintendent to enable that from us, and then it was up to his team to implement it from him.
When it comes to responsibility, and I've asked Ben this question because teachers are obviously being litigated and sued. Teachers that reported drawings, behaviors, up the chain. His contention, paraphrasing, is if they see that the results haven't happened in terms of responsiveness from administration in the school, they should go into law enforcement themselves. I'm interested in your opinions. Appreciating you can't name names or don't want to ahead of depositions. But how far does this responsibility go? Should teachers be also part of those accused of dropping the ball here?
What I can speak to is what I know is that when the teacher saw the drawings and when the teacher saw the concerning things, it was forwarded on. So the teachers reported what they were supposed to.
But to the point of if they see no reaction from higher administration, they should go to law enforcement themselves, and thus are culpable of all. So do you agree with that? Or I mean, how far does this go down the line as far as responsibility?
That's not really my area, no. Mine is creating the policy. Again, it's up to the school to implement that policy, so...
Well, can you tell us under this policy even through the searching bullets and who was making these drawings? Should we amend or remove under these policies?
Those were markers that Tom had talked about. Yes, those were identifying markers that had this team been in place and those markers brought to the team, the outcome would have been different.
Are either of you being sued? Are either of you involved in any litigation for this?
Not yet.
I just wanted to be more specific about the moment where you sort of... The conversation, the straw that broke the camel's back. I know that you specifically said there was a meeting. At that meeting, you said what you had to say and then left. Can you talk about the conversation?
No. Because it was in closed session. Right now, we've been counseled not to be talking about anything that was in closed session, and that meeting was an hour long and 50 minutes...
But was that meeting, I guess?
It was that meeting. That meeting on that day in September.
And so prior to, which leads me to, there was nothing prior to this, maybe even before the shooting, where you all had concerns that you wanted to approach the board with and the community and...
No, ma'am. Actually, you would find that we were getting reports back that our policies were in place, that we're engaged. Recall, during this time period, everyone, we spent a bazillion dollars putting in security systems, softwares, pre-planned live. We put the lock... life locks on the doors. I mean, we were a district that was physically more secure than any probably school in Michigan. We just didn't know what we didn't know, that we were not trained in this threat assessment, and we did not have teams to live it out.
Tom, did you as a board assume that the superintendent had implemented the threat assessment without verifying it had in fact taken place?
Of course, of course, the assumption is that he and rolling down to the people that he put in responsibility for those things, that they're in place. Because when you're hearing through the policy committee, when you're getting updates on security, those... But I will tell you in hindsight, I can tell you that in all the meetings I went to about security and safety, I never got one on this threat assessment document. Not once.
It sounds like you weren't even really aware of the threat assessment document until much later.
Until May... I mean, until August, when he comes into the coffee shop with two copies and we start digging in.
And the board doesn't have any presentations from state...
Finish your question.
You know, just throughout board meetings, you know, you don't have any assessment of, I don't know, school resource, office of teams, anyone coming to you. This is how the security is in our building. This is how the security is among, you know...
Yes, we do. And when you don't know what you don't know, you don't know what's not being said to you. Does that make sense? So I'm being told that we have now even a cabinet member who's in charge of security. We raised up at a level. We are putting in all this equipment, and we're approving it and voting on it. And so we, as a board, have our chest out thinking we're the safest school there is. In the six or seven years that I was on the board, I don't recall, except for approving language on a policy change, that I ever had a presentation on this Secret Service Homeland Security threat assessment process.
Right, can I jump in on... Just hang on one second. I want to address that a little further. This goes to what I said earlier in my speech. The state puts so much emphasis on fire. They mandate how many fire drills. They mandate. We don't have to wait until a fire breaks out